All right, it's 7:30. I'll call the meeting to order. Has the meeting been properly noticed?
Yes, it has.
Moving on to recognitions. Anybody from the board have anything?
This past Wednesday, we were able to have our second annual career fair at Platteville High School. Love to thank the 73 presenters that we had that filled the hallways and classrooms. Also love to send a shout out to the high school staff and Mr. Kreis and the pupil services department for helping organize that wonderful event. Once again, thank you to the community, 73 presenters. Awesome.
It was a busy week at the high school. Monday, we welcomed a number of veterans in partnership with the VFW. Here in town, had a wonderful Veterans Day program. Would like to thank the students and staff. There's one of them over there that helped organize that, really did an excellent job just showcasing veterans in our country and in our community. So, thank you to everybody that was a part of that.
Good evening. We've had a couple of busy weeks at the middle school, too. We have, we find ourselves sort of in a trifecta of music concerts happening. So, we had our choir concert last week, our strings concert last night, and then our band concert will be next Monday at the high school, which you are of course invited to. It is, it's just so amazing to see how far our students grow in the four years that they're here with us. So, it was, it's really exciting to be a part of that. In the room that we're in right now, we celebrated the fifth grade spelling bee today, and so we had that, which was very joyful and exciting as only fifth graders can. So, that was exciting. I believe the, the winning word was diploma. So, that was foreshadowing maybe. We also had a very, really special Monday morning where we celebrated our veterans in our community and in our district. We were very honored to have Keisha King come and speak as our guest speaker at the Veterans Day program. Our band and our choir also performed, and we had a number of seventh and eighth grades speakers that came and spoke in front of the whole middle school, which I always think is so brave of our middle slurs to do. And then we had a small Veterans Day breakfast with our veterans that came, and it was just wonderful to have them be able to sit around and tell stories and be able to serve them in a very small way as a thank you for all they've done for us. So, it's lots of great things happening, and it was fun to celebrate with our kids and our community this week.
Hello, everyone. I would like to announce that tomorrow at the high school, we'll have 180, or I should say 150 guests from other schools. We have 30 students from Platteville representing our school, and we'll have 30 students of all the schools in the Southwest Wisconsin Conference come into a leadership-sportsmanship conference at our school. So, we have a guest speaker. His name is Brady Ewing. He was an alumni of Richland Center High School, and he ended up playing football for the Wisconsin Badgers. And then he is also a three-year person in the NFL, and he's going to be our guest speaker to provide guidance for our students. Another thing that I would just like to add, that I am lucky enough, and I want to thank our administrators in the district office for allowing me to be part of the WIAA. I am on the advisory council and get to represent our school district along with Southwest Wisconsin into making some decisions with the, at the state level with the WIAA. And one of the things that's going to come across to probably the board members, and I'm going to share it with the other administrators, is there's a concept called NIL, Name, Image, and Likeness, that is going to be coming to the forefront here in Wisconsin. There right now are 40 schools, or, excuse me, 40 states that already have the name, image, and likeness. You might have heard it with the NCAA, but the high schools, it's a little different. And just 1% of athletes actually have NIL deals. So, that's one of the things coming up in the near future where our school board might have to, or will need to, make a policy concerning NIL. So, it's, it's coming at us, no matter if we like it or not. So, enjoy that. Thank you.
I would like to just express a shout out and an appreciation for two employees, Michelle Kellogg and Jamie Andrews. Both of them have been instrumental in assisting in arranging intervention groups for some of our learners who we really want to support their access to the core learning experiences for all. Why I want to kind of single this one out is someone who's worked in a number of districts in the past. Very often, you'll see program supports or even school psychologists focus more so on servicing students by label and by label alone. If you receive access to special education services, they are there for you. In our district, they've extended that responsibility beyond that, and they are looking at intervention groups globally to provide universal support, and also for students who struggle irregardless of whether they're receiving support under a disability label or a 504 plan. They are working with our teams in each of the buildings to ensure that not only students are effectively grouped, but also when students are starting to display struggle, that their organizational abilities have allowed us to quickly identify those students and adjust our practices and approach to ensure that our students receive the supports that they need.
So, I got one thing that I didn't mention earlier, but it was a pretty special experience today. I was at the high school, and Jake, Blake Stevens was standing by Jake and I, and Jake pointed out that Blake got to be honorary band director at UWP this weekend. And he had a video, and he's really, really proud of it. And it was really, really cool, really special. Probably the most special thing is there was three young ladies from our band that were standing by the snack machine, and they heard Blake playing the video showing me. They heard the music, and they kind of started chiming into the music. Then Blake was even bigger chested and more proud. So, it was an awesome experience. Obviously, it was awesome for Blake, but it was really nice of the UWP marching band to recognize him and let him be the honorary director. So, it's cool. Thanks, Jake.
Jim?
Nope.
Okay, we'll move on to opportunity for public input. Just a reminder that we have a total of 15 minutes for public input, and individual comments should be limited to three minutes each. Our speaker that we have signed up for tonight is Kimberly Zeitler.
This is my first meeting, sorry. Where do I stand?
You can stand right up here.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. My name is Kimberly Zeitler, and I came here tonight to basically put a face to the name of the email that I sent to Mr. Babel and the school board. So, some of you I know, and some of you I don't, so hello. I sent a pretty lengthy, very detailed email to Mr. Babel and the school board, and I received a thank you for your input, and another thank you from one of the school board members, and then everything else was silent. So, I just thought it was necessary that I come here today to speak and put a face to a name. I have three boys that have been in the Platteville School District. My oldest is 11, and I have since polled my older two, my 11-year-old and my nine-year-old. And it wasn't a decision that we made lightly. We've had several issues with the school district over the years and different buildings, and one of the biggest issues for us that has come up most recently is the books in the schools. My son, my 11-year-old, has come home reading books that are completely inappropriate for his age, for sure, but also for the school in general. There's no reason of all the books that a child can choose from, that my son should be pulling not just one, not two, but at least three books off of the library shelf from the school that tell him to explore his sexuality, to choose one. Are you bisexual? Are you asexual? Are you gay? Pick one. Try them all out and then decide. He's nine at this time. Nine, 10? Doesn't matter. He's a child. And for, for the librarian to have the responsibility of all of the children to say, "Well, your parent doesn't want you to read this, so why don't I, as one person, take on the responsibility of all of these children to say, 'Sorry, your mom doesn't want you to read this,'" that is not their responsibility. And my son was not even bringing these books home. So, I, as a parent, couldn't say, "No, you can't read this book." I didn't find out he was reading it until I found out he was put into an extra reading program, and he wasn't bringing books home because he was reading books like the book Heartstopper that says fuck, dick, shit, bitch, faggot, all these things that we do not allow our kids to say at home, at school, and yet he can check it out at school. And guess where he keeps it? At school, because he knows if he brings that book home, it's not acceptable, and it shouldn't be acceptable for that age. Not only is, not only is the book saying these things, it's telling him to try out different sexualities. It had sexual assault. It had one boy pinning another boy up against a locker, forcing a kiss on him. Sexual assault, teaching that to our children. It's, it's unbelievable. We would not allow that in our school, and we shouldn't allow it to be read. And I understand that there's a diverse group, a diverse range of ages and people, and what people accept as okay and not okay. But at the end of the day, this is a school, right? We are teaching this. It's for education. That book is not educational. And there are so many other books to choose from, so many great, amazing books that tell our kids how to be awesome, how to be kind, how to be neighborly, how to be brave, how to be bold, how to be amazing. Kids, we don't need to indoctrinate them with the sexuality and all this sex talk and choosing genders and choosing all this stuff at the very young, innocent age of nine or younger. This is just the middle school. I have no idea what's happening at the other schools. But at the end of the day, to say that parents need to read to their children or ask their children what they're reading, or, you know, put, put that burden on us when we, as parents, I had no idea those books were even available to my kids. None. And thankfully, I do communicate with my kids, and all I had to do is ask them, "Hey bud, you haven't been bringing your books home. Why not? What are you reading?" Well, let me tell you about this book I'm reading, Mom. That's how I found out, not because he's bringing them home, not because we don't read with him, because they're available, and because he knows that he can't bring them home, so he doesn't. He reads them at school, and he talks to his friends about them. I had, is my time up? Oh, sorry. The email, I did bring copies if anybody wants it. I also have copies of some of the pages if anybody wants to see these pages. I did bring copies of those as well. And basically, it all just talks about the lack of transparency. Two parents from the school districts, not pointing out one specific person, but a district as a whole. Thank you so much for your time.
Our second speaker signed up is Tara Schaller.
Hello. I have had a slightly different experience than Kimberly, and so I can probably talk about that a different time. As far as books are concerned, my child has, is in a sixth grade classroom, and on the wall is a list of recommended reading. And currently, the Heartstopper series is on that list of recommended reading for, for 10 and 11-year-olds. And so, I don't know if you're familiar with that book, but it's, it talks a whole lot about sex. And regardless of gay or straight or any of that, I just feel like the, the language in that book, talking about penetration, talking about, are you, you know, are you going to try it? And it's especially book number five, but I feel like if my child is starting to read that series, she's, she's a voracious reader, and so if she starts a series, she needs to finish it. And so, I just want to put that out there, that that particular series, I think, is not appropriate for young children. I also have been made aware of a book called It's Perfectly Normal. And while there are many parts of that book, it's about sex and puberty. My, so my nine-year-old, she skipped a grade, so she'll be nine next September when she starts fifth grade, and I'm just thinking of what's going to be available to her. So, this book, I'm just going to read some things from it. So, this is talking about abortion and, okay, there are also centers called pregnancy counseling centers that clearly say that they are not healthcare centers. They also say that they do not offer healthcare services, but that they do offer pregnancy counseling and do give out baby supplies as diapers, baby clothes, and baby toys. However, these centers also give out information about abortion that includes persuading people not to have a safe and legal abortion and tell people information about abortion that is not true. Some also give out information about birth control and emergency contraception that is not true and is aimed to keep people from using birth control and using emergency contraception. There are, it's, I, I just find it strange that a nine- or 10-year-old would be reading something like this. Most of the book talks about sexual intercourse, and it talks about feeling sexy quite often. And when two people are feeling sexy, they might do this, they might do that, and it goes into great, great detail. I encourage you all to read this book. It's called It's Perfectly Normal. And I don't think a 10-year-old is sexy. Like, the whole concept of this being appropriate for 10-year-olds doesn't sit right with me. So, I'm going to read a little bit more from the book. Sexual intercourse, or as it is often called, making love, is a kind of sharing between two people, male and female, or between two females or between two males. Touching, caressing, kissing, hugging, often called making out, are other kinds of sharing that can make two people feel close and loving and excited. People can, people can and do become sexually excited without having sexual intercourse. Much of this is true. When two people feel loving and excited about each other, they, but also feel they are too young to have sexual intercourse, sorry, I'm going to skip ahead. Deciding to wait to have sexual intercourse until one is older or feels more responsible is called postponement. I find that very interesting, because that's assuming that you are postponing something that is, anyway. I have, I'm just going to turn my screen around for you. So, this book is full of drawings. And so, if you, you can go online anywhere, but we've got three different couples having sex in different ways, and it goes through vaginal sex, anal sex. There's a whole chapter on masturbation, which I wish I could have read out loud, too, but my time is up. So, okay, thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to information and discussion items. First item up is the Engage Rocket presentation.
Over the summer, the board partnered with Engage Rocket, and that was an effort to listen to our staff and then act based on that. We, we want to have a better idea of what our staff values, needs that they have, and then as a district, respond to those needs. So, up on the big screen, we do have C.T. from Engage Rocket. Thank you, C.T., for joining us. And what I think I'll do on my end is try and pull up the presentation, or you can share your screen, however you'd like to do it. C.T., it's all yours.
Thank you very much, and it's a good evening, everybody. It's a great pleasure to be here with you. As Mr. Babel has shared, we worked together on putting this baseline report for employee listening over the summer, and this was run late September to October. A bit of background about myself. I'm an economist turned entrepreneur. Spent 15 years studying organizational psychology, data science. Prior to starting Engage Rocket, I spent five years at an organization called Gallup, where basically we learned a lot of these techniques which are applied in this particular survey. As I go through this, please let me know if you have any questions. I've summarized some of the key takeaways from the baseline report here, and I'll dive into each of these items in detail. So, there are a few things that we can celebrate. One of them is, from a staff retention perspective, there were really strong signals that staff were very attached to the district. They, they were happy where, where they are, and there was also a very strong sense of belonging and pride that came through in the responses. Within each team and within each building, there was a high level of trust and collaboration. So, when I shared this with some of the admin team, this was really something that I believed we should celebrate. When it came to looking at areas of improvement, there were a few things at the school district level which we should pay attention to. One of them was discretionary effort. So, we tried to measure the degree to which people felt like they would put in that extra mile. And this, this was something that fell a little bit shorter than some of the other items that we were measuring. There was also some dissatisfaction with professional development opportunities or the perception of PD opportunities that were available. And there was a, a gap between buildings and teams internally, and the trust that, and collaboration that they had, and the perceived trust and collaboration that they have with the rest of the district and with other teams across the district. So, this was perhaps not unusual, but it was noteworthy to me to point out. The other thing, the third big pillar that we looked into, was the mentorship program for new hires. So, there were some new initiatives that were refined this year. So, the checklist, we found, was a real success. People who received mentorship really felt comfortable seeking help from their mentors regularly. And there was some feedback about launch week as well, and the cadence and the pace of the activities during launch week, and having that together with the rest of the regular onboarding, like operational activities, that were, was highlighted as a bit of an issue. So, I'm going to go into the details over the next few slides. We saw a 68% participation from the, all, all the staff in Platteville. So, 155 staff shared their voices, and this was a good result through a lot of the efforts from the admin team and all the building leaders to encourage staff to give their voice. And when, when you look at the margin of error, we're looking at only a 4% margin of error, 90% confidence interval. So, this was a decent margin of error and an acceptable one for the survey. At the high level, the way that the survey was organized was we had a few outcome questions. So, these are questions that are not directly actionable by, by leadership, by staff. And then we had driver questions, which were a little bit more, what you can do to improve the outcome questions. So, when, when we look at the outcome questions, you would see that the responses to questions, like, "I see myself continuing at my school for the next 12 months, and I'm proud to work at my school." These were, these, these had very high favorable scores, above 90%, which is very, very strong, even when compared with other school districts. In terms of the discretionary effort, on the other hand, this was, this was at 68%, which is not in itself a bad result, but it was significantly lower than what you would see from the other outcome questions that we were tracking. In terms of the driver questions, we, we would run into them in a bit more detail later on. And I wanted to indicate to you what this, what this means in terms of what is actionable and where we should focus our energies and effort as a district. So, when we looked at what is, basically, we ran a multiple regression analysis on the data to be able to find out what moves the needle the most on staff engagement. And you'll find the impact of that on the horizontal axis. Basically, anything that is on the left-hand side has no impact on the level of staff engagement. On the right-hand side, you'll find increasing levels of impact on staff engagement. We then did a scatter plot of each of these different question items on the, the relative scores that these items had, and this is from low-scoring items to high-scoring items. And so, what this scatter plot gives us is a view on what is it that actually moves the needle and what isn't doing so well from a score perspective. So, perhaps not surprisingly, on the far-right-hand side, we'll see that trust is a major determinant of staff engagement. So, we'll see that both trust in the team and trust in the district came out as having a very high-impact score compared to everything else. The, why this was highlighted is partly because this is all, both of these items are already scoring well. So, both the district and the team are scoring decently well. What I highlighted in the first slide was the gap between the two. So, you'll see that having trust in the team that, that, that people operate within is relatively high. When it came to trusting the rest of the district, this was not as high. So, this was something that came out as noteworthy, even though both of these were relatively high-scoring. When we looked at what else had a relatively high or moderate impact but was low-scoring, we came out with two different items. So, collaboration within, across teams came out as relatively low and, but high-scoring in terms of the impact that it has on staff engagement. The other one that we saw in this category was professional growth opportunities, and I'm, I'm going to dive into both of these in detail. So, when we look at professional learning opportunities, we ask these two questions. "My professional development and growth is encouraged at work, and I have good opportunities for professional growth at my school." So, what we can see from here is that there's a relatively high amount of encouragement. So, P, staff feel that their PD is encouraged, but they're less able to find opportunities, or perhaps the opportunities that are extended to them may not have been communicated such that they can draw that line of sight between the opportunities and the actual PD growth that they should see. So, that came out as one of the possible areas of improvement. When it came to teamwork and collaboration, you'll see that within the schools, promoting that spirit of collaboration is high. But when it came to working effectively with each other across teams, this was less high. This was of concern to me because it had a high impact on staff engagement. The third thing that was highlighted was trust. So, here you can see trust in the team and trust in Platteville School District as, as my employer, both relatively high-scoring, but with a gap of 12 percentage points. Final thing I'll talk about here is the launch week feedback, generally a resounding success. What we saw from some of the open-ended comments was, is highlighted here. I wouldn't go too much into detail, and I'll let you read through this. I wouldn't go too much into detail, and I'll let you read through this at your own time. So to summarize, here are the key takeaways. Celebrating higher retention signals, there's generally a high level of engagement within the staff. A sense of belonging and pride was very strong. And within each building, within each team, very strong collaboration. There was that sense that the opportunity to grow themselves and not really met with the levels of encouragement that people were feeling. And there's this gap in trust and collaboration outside their own teams. That's all I had to share with you today. Is there any questions, any clarifications?
Anybody have any questions? Except we don't have any questions. C T, thank you very much for that informative presentation.
All right. Thank you very much, and very nice to meet all of you.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to item B, the State School Board Convention Attendance and Registration.
Just a reminder, if you're going, please coordinate that with Lisa in the office.
Moving on to next item, budget planning.
So I will work through the slideshow that is attached. I'll certainly rely on Dimitri as our business administrator to fill in some of the places that I'm forgetting or that I'm not explaining correctly, as what happened in operations. Slide two, this was part of our annual meeting. So we've seen this before. The difference is, this is our actual budget now. We had the two options at the annual meeting. So we are projected to have deficit spending of $800,000 this school year. I should state, from last year, we had a projected deficit spending. This year, we have projected deficit spending. There are some items that, as we go throughout this school year, that we can reduce cost that are under our control. There are some items that are outside of our control. Last year, I don't recall any major maintenance surprises that we had. This year, the one that we've had so far would be the high school boilers needed some work done. Grand scheme of things, around $20,000, so it wasn't that big. But you never know. Some of the variable expenses as we go forward, these are things that, we've seen this before, but these are items that we just don't know for sure what they're going to be. The first one is healthcare. Our current agreement with Dean ends on June 30, 2025. We're going to start that process of going out to bid, and there should be. All right, let's get back to that. For some reason, a little technical difficulty on my end, but hopefully the board can open up those other attachments. It's a calendar. The anchor point of that is going to be, by our April board meeting, we would like to have health insurance resolved. Health insurance is a significant budget item. It's certainly not the biggest budget item. Our largest budget item is our staff, our most important asset. But it is something that is very impactful, going back to what we listened from C T, on recruiting, on retaining, on having our staff rely on high-quality healthcare. So other districts, other enterprises, they're in the same situation. When they go out, it's going to be, we're predicting around a 10% to 15% increase. The other unknown is the state biennial budget. We won't know that until they pass it. The process has begun. I believe DPI has submitted their budget. The governor soon will submit his. But we do have some change in our state level of government with our legislators and with our senators. Who knows how that will play out? I was in a meeting earlier today, and one of the people who has a lot more experience inside of the capital stated traditionally, when you have the, and it wasn't significant change, but when you have some change at that capital level, the budgets are slower to be made because there is some of that. They have to get to know each other. They have to get to learn how they're going to build a budget. It'd be nice if our budget was, from the state, was done on July 1. It may not be. Indicators are, it really may not be. And I recall, I really want to say 2006, but it might have been 2007, but it was September post-October when they passed a budget. So that's that variable that we just don't know. So as we plan forward, it's a variable we don't know. So we need to be more conscious of that and be more conservative with our expenses. And then there's also, we've tried deferring maintenance. We've deferred technology. We've done that last year. We'll attempt to do it again this year. Every time you do it, it gets more and more risky. A budget summary, this is something we've seen, different versions of. We continue to monitor it. Just a reminder, deferment, that's a short-term fix. What we have to do going forward is consider one year, three-year, five-year, 10-year, much like our capital plan. How are we going to control our expenses, knowing that our revenues are, for the most part, stagnant? What makes this especially difficult for the Plattville School District is that our student population is steady, if not rising. If you had a school district in which your student population was declining or a heavy decline, well, there'd be opportunities there. We will have the same amount of students and those same needs going forward to meet with that hard cap on our revenues. That's a challenge. Operating costs, we have the improvement plan. Dimitri will talk about that at a later item. We have a roof replacement plan. Sidebar on that, as we end up the capital referendum, our contingency fund looks to be enough to address one, maybe two of our roofs. That took a lot of hard work, a lot of tough decisions, going through that two-year capital improvement process. So we have that contingency, that money, and it qualifies because it is part of our capital. It's part of our facility, so we can do that. So we need to take advantage of that. That's one time. We still have that long-term issue that we have to face. Different items that we can look at as far as deferment and reductions going forward through staff attrition. Note, last, when we started this year, we did reduce our staff 1.2 full-time employees. Will we be looking at an opportunity or opportunities to do that again going into the '25, '26 school year? Yes, we will. That will happen. It has to happen in order for us to stay within our budget. Vendor selections, everything that we have, we continually request, request. We request bids. We'll be going out for bids for things that we normally wouldn't. But anything we can do to challenge our current cost, we will have to do that. Deferred maintenance, deferring student-staff technology purchases, reducing staff professional development and training. This one, it's proven to be more difficult than I anticipated just because of the variety of services that we offer. We have early childhood students at three. We have students that are 21 that are attending our school and all the different needs. That one, I attempted to try and contain, corral it a little bit, and I didn't do a very good job of that. So that's another item we have to continue to evaluate and see if there's a way. Reduce all supply budgets. We did that last year. Going into this year, we'll continue to do that. And then staff positions, I talked about that through attrition, and also benefits. And that, the vehicle we're going to try and use as we go through this process is pulling up our employee handbook. You'll see later, there's an item that we can try this year for this employee handbook. But then there's also what we can do for next year's employee handbook. And that's going to be the tool, the vehicle, however you want to call it. That's what we'll use. And what I envision is, from this point forward, bringing forward to the board each time, here's an item to consider. Pass through operations or whatever other committee is appropriate than to the full board. But incrementally, make our way into that '25 and '26 employee handbook. This is a calendar, looking at, again, I mentioned that earlier, that April, that's that anchor point for health insurance finalized. Review that. So '25, '26, please note '25, '26 for this. We are able to review salary wages. We can look at considerations with that. There is not a universal fix. There's not one thing we can do that says we're done and we're ready for '25, '26. We have to address a variety of different ways. And we've had this discussion before when we were looking at salary and wages increases. We usually do that in March. And there is no one way in which everybody's treated equally. We have too big of a variety of skills and employees. So we're going to have to use a variety of options to try and address that '25 and '26 expense budget. So you can look at, looking at the matrix, maybe just having the ability to advance on our matrix. Maybe that's all that we allow. Maybe the consideration of a wage mean raise, and that's what we've done the last couple of years. Last year was a 2% of the mean, and we applied that to everybody. We can also have, we have to figure out, whatever we do, the consideration of those staff members that are not in a matrix. For example, our managerial positions. They're separate. We still have to come up with a way to address that. Co-curricular programs and pay. One of the things that I will be bringing forward in December for board review will be with the co-curricular programs and pay, we have a matrix. And two or three years ago, we tied those amounts to the base through a percentage. So each year, they would just adjust with the rise in the base, would be the rise in those. What I'm going to bring forward will be, just to freeze it, pull out the percentages, do not link it to our base salary for next year. So that gives you an example of something that we will consider for that '25 and '26 budget. Professional staff stipends. This is an element, I believe the veteran members of the board can speak to it a lot better than I. But after 2011, the district had a different set of rules when it came to employee handbooks. One of the things that was incorporated at that time was, if you're familiar with the matrix, you can advance on the matrix, and this language is in our handbook. If you have a positive evaluation and you complete a stipend, then you can advance down. That's different than a raise. This is just advancement. My opinion is, right now, the stipends have run their course in our district. That opinion can be argued, but this is mine. Right now, our staff complete this stipend. So it's a project that they select. It's approved with the principal or whoever their administrator is. They work on it at times throughout the year. At the end of the year, it's submitted. And if approved, the stipend for almost all of our staff is $1,000 for our distinguished educators, because they're expected not only to do the project, but then to teach others. It's $1,500. What I'll be proposing here shortly will be, can we just make that part of the salary schedule, the matrix? So the gross pay for an employee would be the same. They're still getting that. It's just part of the matrix. I think that would allow us some goodwill with our staff going forward. Again, I think it has run its course. We still have the evaluation system in order for someone to advance, and we also have the ability, two years ago, we put in the language in which we can freeze an employee individually. So I think we have a mechanism to compensate for not having a stipend. But that's an idea. That's not exactly a cost-saving. That'll be cost-neutral. But looking at it through the eyes of our staff, that I think, I hope, that that would be something that they would be in favor of, and that would be some goodwill. Because a lot of the other stuff is going to be tough, not going to promote goodwill. Question?
Do you know currently what percent of the staff utilizes this stipend?
My, I would say, rough numbers, 100 staff, I'd say 96. Take advantage of it.
That's correct. Also, consider when the staff has to complete this stipend. This is also on top of their normal educate, their normal instruction and also on top of professional development that they do as well. So put all that in mind for $1,000. I can tell you, when I was a teacher, that was something I just did not do because that was a lot of stress. It was a lot of stress. Taking away that stipend requirement from the staff, you can only imagine how much stress that has been released.
'25, '26. And the last one, there's always the option to freeze our salary and wage tables as they are. Health insurance, I talked about 10% to 15%. Looks, my mindset is, we're going to pay more and get less. It'll cost more. We'll have fewer benefits. There are a lot of subtle adjustments you can make in your health insurance. But as we gather these, and M3 is our broker. They're the ones that go out to the deans, the courts, to the state system. And they say, fight amongst yourselves and give Plattville the best deal. And when they give us the deal, we kick it back and say, we don't like it. And they try again. If it's a premium increase, that's mostly going to be on the district. That'll be an increased cost for the district. If we go with a deductible increase, that will be a cost that is then burdened by the employees. Will it be one or the other?
It'll sum up to the employee on the premium side, minimal cost.
Yep. Let me help with that. Correct. So the district, this is state law, in schools, 87.4% or 6%. 87.4% is the district's responsibility of the premium. The employee has 12.6. So I mean, those are the things, as we work through that, we'll get the different bids in, we'll share out, we'll meet with staff, we'll see where we're at. But that's that variable. That's going to cost more.
Talk about the transition to HSA and high deductible. You spoke on that in operations, Jim. In operations, you spoke about, we've already made the switch from a traditional health plan to now we have a high-deductible health plan with a health savings account. That saved the district a lot of money two years ago. And overall, it has been a good switch, both financially and now that people have gotten used to how to manage it. We can't do that again. So that goes to, like, the only two levers you can really, really pull is the premium and deductible.
Thank you.
Not that we can't. I mean, we can go to that structure. We just, that's not going to be the giant saving. But that structure can still be maintained.
Yes.
The structure could be maintained. We can dabble with it.
Yes.
Yeah, good point.
But just having that blanket statement, the structure is still there. We don't want anybody nervous about that.
Yes.
And then the last item in '25, '26, I've held off on starting the calendar consideration. That might be a tool that we can use. When we go, and we're talking about goodwill with staff, how can we manipulate the calendar so we still recognize student learning as our, that's why we're here, but yet adjust that calendar in order to help on the staff's end? Other budget considerations. And I brought this forward in operations, that first sub-bullet. And that will be brought up in front of, for an action item at our next regular meeting. In short, the date currently is- In short, the date currently is March 15th for our retirees to declare, I am retiring. It's approved. They're now eligible for the retirement benefit. The school's retirement benefit, not WRS, the school's retirement benefit. By, my proposal is to move that to January 15th. And because that would be in this '24, '25 employee handbook, our employee started the year. And if we're going to change that, we need to somehow have an exchange. With the district gains, by having the retirements declared early, it gives us an opportunity to evaluate that position. Does that position stay as it is? Does that position get moved around? Does it get absorbed by others? Does it just get abandoned? However, but by doing that in January, by January 15th, that gives us more time to analyze that. Remember, our student counts stay in the same. This is going to be difficult to do, and by that, it's going to take time to analyze it. The sooner we can have that determination, the sooner we can recruit, the sooner we can get what we feel are the top candidates who are in their first year, second year of teaching. So that's what the district gets out of this. This year, part of the proposal is, for those employees this year who retire prior to January 15th, they would receive a $1,000 stipend, or, oh, no, gosh, no, not stipend, a $1,000 bonus. And that bonus would not count towards their WRS amount. It would just be $1,000. To me, the district is providing that $1,000. But the benefit we're getting in being able to recruit those first-year, second-year educators before other schools are, I believe it's money well spent. So that will be a proposal in front of the full board in December. Another retirement benefit that is up for discussion, it's listed there, so when somebody successfully retires, they have the, they have their retirement, school retirement, placed in a tax-sheltered annuity. They have the option to stay on the school's insurance for five years. That retiree pays the whole premium, pays the whole deductible. So it's not really a, an added expense for the district directly, nor do many of our staff take advantage of that for those five years. They have other options that they have thought through. That's why they're able to retire. There may be two or three that are currently using that option. Now, that's over the past five years. Also, we're duplicating what the federal government also, what the federal government tells us to do, and that's through COBRA. When you leave that position, you have 18 months in which you can stay on, and we can't deny them. So we're duplicating it. What I'm thinking of long-term, and I'm going back to that health insurance, if they are on our insurance plan, they are factored into when we go out for bids. So that is where the district would have that benefit from that. So that's another item that we'll be bringing forward for the board's consideration.
And that's for the '25, '26 handbook? That's not something that we would try to do '24, '25, like the first one we talked about.
Thank you. I talked about RFPs, primarily through maintenance. Higher education expenses, that is for our students with the, as a district, we're very proud that we cover a primary part of those higher education classes that our kids are taking. We have to consider that. We have to look at that. Do we have to pare that down? How do we do that? But it's roughly $350,000 we spend. That's something that we need to look at. The capital improvement plan, that'll come later. Transportation expenses, we went from 16 routes last year to 15 this year. We'll continue to look at the routes, reducing those. Technology expenses, staffing review. And I've mentioned this a couple of times, it's through that attrition process primarily. But there may be a situation in which, what we're trying to avoid is planning, we're trying to avoid a significant event from happening. We're trying to systematically go through this process. And what I anticipate, as we go forward, each board meeting will have an opportunity to address future spending. That's kind of my challenge, to keep bringing that up to the board.
Jim, so the consideration about the health insurance for retired employees is taking that off the table since COBRA's exists?
Yes. They still get the retirement. That's in their TSA. It's just they're not able to join our plan. They can for 18 months.
87.4 is the correct number.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on the budget presentation? All right, thank you, Jim.
You're welcome.
We'll move on to the items on the consent agenda.
Within our consent agenda, we have minutes of previous meetings. We have the financial report, in which receipts, $241,697.75. Disbursements, $3,468,174.19. We have another month paying the capital referendum, the bills for that. So I would anticipate, once we get to January, this will be more of a reasonable what we're used to, where they're at least somewhat close to one another. In-line items to follow. We have a policy that's been brought forward from Policy and Community Outreach. We have a middle school boys' basketball hire, high school boy swimming coach hire, seventh grade girls' basketball coach to hire, a resignation of a middle school homework club, resignation, middle school homework club. We have J, which is a leave of absence request. That has been done within the constraints of the employee handbook, and I support the leave of absence request. And then we have a three-year plan in which the library has to have this approved at the board level. Then we submit it, and then we're in compliance.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Kurt, second by Steve, to approve the items on the consent agenda as presented. Any questions or comments on those? Hearing none will vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries, looking for a motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
That was a motion by Colleen and a second by Keesha, to approve the items on the consent agenda as presented. Any questions or comments on that? Hearing none will vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. On to action items. First item up is the personnel item.
We have a FIAD intern, something our district has been doing for several years, and I would like to offer that or seek approval from the board for Mr. Skubal.
So moved. Second.
I have a question. When it comes to our interns, how does that also impact our budget as well? We talk about staff. We talk about now having to go through the staff attrition. If we're paying an intern a salary, how much does that impact as well?
An intern receives, and this is a state-controlled amount, of $4,500.
Okay.
The name needs to be updated in the public. It says Luke and Alex.
Thank you. You had asked of that, and I missed, I caught one of them.
It just looked great.
I did not catch the second one. My apologies.
So we have a motion by Matt and a second by Ben to approve the hiring of Luke Skubal?
Skubal.
How's that?
Skubal.
Skubal. As a Westview Elementary FIAD intern for the second semester of the '24, '25 school year, as presented. Any questions or comments on that? Hearing none will vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. On to another personal item, staff retirement.
Is my recommendation to approve the retirement of Tammy Haag, currently the principal of Neil Wilkins. She retires in good standing with the district.
Thank you, Tammy, for your service to our school district and to our students.
It's been a pleasure.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Bessie, reluctantly seconded by Matt, to approve the retirement of Tammy Haag, principal of Neil Wilkins, effective June 30, 2025, as presented. Any other questions or comments on that? Hearing none will vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Carries.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Kurt, second by Ashley, to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? We are adjourned. PM, thank you very much.